Let me call to order the July 6, 2022, meeting. Committee, the whole meeting for Borough Council. We'll start if you'll stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, under subcommittee reports, anything from infrastructure?
It's in your packet.
In the pack. Transportation? No meeting? Efficient methods?
Yes. We've been working on updating the programs that coordinate the properties. I don't remember offhand what the program. Oh, wait, here it is right here.
CMIS.
CMIS, yes. So that we were able to more efficiently access billing and some of the other permits, permitting, and the other departments. That's really all we've been working on to try and update. But what that's really going to do is it's going to help make cross-reference seem more efficient and easier to work with.
It'll be streamlining for public works and finance. Okay. Anything else? No. Counselor Prascal, ordinance review? Nope. Economic development. Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. So just some highlights of things that I want to remind people to take advantage of this summer. Take It Outdoors, which has moved from the Chester side of the river to the Montgomery County side of the river in Riverfront Park. Those particular vendors that have a lovely display and plenty of kayaks to use are very happy with their move to Pottstown, and it's been very popular, and the weather has absolutely cooperated. So I encourage you. Crave Monco has Valley Forge Tourism puts that out on a quarterly basis. They highlighted Welcome to the Avenue among some other of our restaurants. That's a really good piece to see. 400 East High Street now has a butcher shop on it. Better on the bone, it opened last week. It looks wonderful inside, and the owner himself designed the sign as well as the cart. So I encourage you to go there. Sore Aerial Fitness will be opening next month. So that looks like something really fun to try if you want to suspend yourself while doing yoga.
And you'll tell us where that is?
Yes, it's in the former space where the children's
Little gym.
Little gym was. Correct.
New York City.
Right, so they will be opening next month. Next month, yes. The terminal has several new vendors. I encourage you to go in. One that has been really, people have been looking forward to is Uptown Flavors. Zemir Trot did own Uptown Flavors. He first established on Kyne Street. He is a wonderful businessman and just a great chef, and people really enjoy his food. So I encourage you, please, to frequent his place along with Eileen's Kitchen. Bisson Pizzeria, I even saw a comment from the former councillor Arms, who came into Pottstown and enjoyed Bisson Pizzeria. Rivet has been very busy. They have a newly paved parking lot. And we are working on the light-up High Street project, so that installation should be starting later this month, which is really, we're thrilled, and there's still an opportunity to be able to contribute to that effort.
Very good.
And that would be a tax-deductible donation.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like me to stay up here for Land Bank?
While you were up there, yes.
Okay, so Land Bank this month, or that was last month, at the end of June, Land Bank, the Land Bank did look at several properties that are coming up for the August judicial sale, and we have identified a list of properties that the Land Bank is interested in pursuing, and we will be releasing those addresses once we do a little more research on them, and hope that a developer that is interested in turning them into owner-occupied properties will be looking for that
Great.
On our social media. And just a reminder to everybody also, Amtrak is running the bus, and we encourage you, it does run from Reading straight through to Philadelphia. You can pick it up on Hanover Street. That is both of my reports.
Very good. Thank you. Emergency services. Chief Hand here?
He's reporting out in West Pots Grove tonight.
Okay. Will he be here Monday?
I think he'll be here next month, reporter.
Next month, all right. Human relations. Ms. Levin Good. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors, council president, Madam Mayor. July 4th was Independence Day, and we celebrated our 246 year of independence from Great Britain's role. And the Eid-Allah-Adha is a major religious holiday for the Muslim community. It starts on July 9th, and it lasts for three days. And July is also National Ice Cream Month, and National Ice Cream Day is on Sunday, July 17th. The commission's next meeting is Tuesday, July 12th, at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Ms. Linsky?
That'll be me tonight. Our executive director is
Yes? Can you hear me? We can't. Go ahead.
Great. Yeah, our executive director is out with COVID this week, so we, yeah, her, it affects her voice, so we're, that's why I'm home tonight. I do want to say that at the Go Fourth event, the library had a table, and we met many nice people, and the staff was working over the holiday, so I was happy to hear them say they felt it was well worth it because of all the nice people they met. So that, there's lots happening at the library this summer, and our website has a list of the events under Calendar of Events. You just go on the website, go to that, and you'll see them all. I'll just mention a few. For adults, we have Mahjong on Fridays, 10 to 12, a monthly cookbook club, and the ingredient this month that you are to use is Jell-O pudding mix. You can do vanilla or chocolate, your choice, and then we ask you to post your recipe that you came up with on the website. At the Hour Book Club meets monthly, and this month, July 27th, we're going to do a puzzle night from 5:00 to 7:00 in the mezzanine, and it can be a team effort or an individual effort, and the prize for the person who gets the puzzle done first is a $25 Amazon gift card. So we'll see how that goes in Pottstown with Puzzle Night. For children, there's a bubble dance party in the side lawn this Friday at 2:00, and then they repeat those every so often. There's meals for children this summer again, 0 to 18 years old, Mondays and Wednesdays, free meals. This time, you do have to eat them in the building rather than taking them home, but they're there free Mondays and Wednesdays. And there'll be a story walk at Riverfront Park, starting this Saturday, July 9th, at 1:00 PM, and then you can walk through and read the book. After that, they'll just leave them there for a while to, for anyone to go and read as they're walking. And there's a Radical Reptiles show, July 27th, 2:00 PM, in the community room downstairs, and I'm going to that myself because the same lady did an owl show in June, and she was wonderful, and the children loved it, and it was so adorable to watch them. So I will be there for the reptiles for sure. I recommend that one highly. So please, come to the library. It's a cool place to be, and I mean that in both senses of the word. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rickett Center. Counselor Kirkland's not here. Anybody else? Nothing?
There's a package.
Okay. F is the school district councillor.
I didn't attend, so I'll follow up next month.
Okay. That would be our mayor's report. Mayor Henry?
Yes, thanks. So this, June was pretty busy. I had the honor of speaking at the Tri-County Leadership Academy graduation. I had forgotten that I had spoke to them early on in their class, it seems like a year ago, but time flies when you're having fun in COVID, so graduation appeared, and I was honored to be one of the speakers. It really, really meant a lot to me, especially seeing the people that were in this leadership academy, people that I look up to. The fact that I could have made a difference with my story to them means a lot, so thank you to Jenna Armato and the chamber for that. I participated in a rally against gun violence. We were at the Sunoco, myself, David Charles, and some other members of the community. We had big signs up that said "Honk" to stop gun violence because of all of the horrific acts of gun violence that have happened in all over the United States for the past couple years, and has escalated. And I would, I'd like to thank all the individuals that came out. It was pretty moving to see little kids that were on High Street in their houses, hearing, you know, people in their community rallying against gun violence, and these little kids are making signs and coming out and joining them. So it was really powerful, and I think they also participated in the parade on the 4th. I think I heard them, but I was, I missed seeing them. So I want to thank the community for that. We've been having weekly fundraising meetings for the explosion fund through TCN. I believe we have raised in that fund up to about 92,000. A lot of that has gone, we've distributed for the funerals for the family, and we've also made distribution, small distributions to the displaced families, and we're still working on fundraising efforts and rebuilding. I want to thank the borough for the Play Streets Kids Night Out. That was really cool. I went to the first one on 423 Chestnut Street. There are more coming up, which I will mention later. So thank you. It seemed like it was a really good crowd, and the kids seemed to really enjoy that. I also met with Commissioner Valarcouche and Mungu Sanchez, who was the Director of Community Engagement for the Eastern Atlantic Regional Council of Carpenters Union, and I also met with Ryan Boyer, who's the President of the Labor Union in Philadelphia. We are working on getting their team down here to Hale Street to survey the damage and see if there's anything that they can do, be it through donations of time, labor, or materials to help the displaced families. I want to thank Troy Rivera, who hosted the Second Annual Juneteenth. That was a really nice festival, well-attended. We had our Mosaic Summer Solstice Party at Gracie's, which was very nice, thanks to the staff at Mosaic for making that a beautiful evening. And I, I did something that may not seem that impressive to most of you, but I have major back issues, and I have had four back surgeries, and my entire thoracic spine is fused. So I don't really work out all that much. And Elaine Schaefer from Schuylkill River convinced me that I should do the Schuylkill River Sojourn, which is a seven-day paddle down the Schuylkill River. I've never kayaked in my life. I did one day, which is better than the Montgomery County Commissioners, but I'm really proud of myself. I went by myself in a kayak, and we paddled for 18 miles from Riverfront Park to Montclair Lock 60. I was terrified. I was supposed to be a mentor. I was looking for my mentor. So there was kids from the YW that were there that were much braver than me, but I made it, and I had to soak in a bath of Epsom salt and bio-freeze my arms. So I'm glad I didn't do the seven days, but it was a very challenging and rewarding experience, and it is so magical being on the river and seeing hundreds and hundreds of kayaks. We had 137 people that day, and I just want to say thank you to Take It Outdoors, the Bad Adventure Company, Constellation, all of the sponsors, Hopkins Miss Bank, and so many others for making that, that opportunity possible. Take It Outdoors has Wednesday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00. They do an evening paddle, and I think I will be looking into that, so if anyone wants to join me. It's so peaceful on the river, and it is just a magical experience. If you haven't seen the drone coverage from over the river, if it looked cool from the drone, it was very cool from the boat. So I encourage everybody to come out and just check out Take It Outdoors. And I'd like to thank the Borough of Royersford and their council president, Anil Dom, for providing us access to Victory Park, which is where we stopped for lunch, the Linfield Community Park as well, and Buster, who was the, one of the master paddlers who made sure that I didn't get swept down the river to Philadelphia. I also did my second blood donation for the Red Cross that we had at the YW. That was a big turnout. I was happy to see a lot of our leaders in the community on the table next to me donating blood. We had the Pottstown Farm, and I did a proclamation for a butterfly pledge. Monarchs are endangered, and as you know, they pollinate, along with bees and everything else, all of our food, and so I thought it was appropriate to be at the farm. We gave out plants and educated kids on the importance of planting native milkweed and pollinator plants, which we'll be bringing into the borough as well. And we had our Pottstown Rumble. I met people from Connecticut and Vegas and all over. People were really excited to go out and play. They had some nice weather. We had our car show that was packed. Want to thank Harry Dean for the Rivet Concert we had the other night. Chunk Love Sloth played, and another band that I cannot remember the name, but it was a lot of fun. It was well-attended, and it seems like we're getting some nice weather for all of these events. I also had the honor of attending the Eagle Scout Ceremony for Tristan Repko. I have never been to an Eagle Scout Ceremony. I'm an only child, so I don't know anything about Eagle Scouts. But it was pretty amazing to see that these kids go from a young age and stick through a program until they're 18, painting merit badges and just like learning a lot of like good life skills. And so I was honored to be there, and I'm glad that they still kind of do those ceremonies. I also want to thank Reverend Vernon Ross, sorry, Pastor Vernon Ross, and Reverend Nicole Jackson, and Pastor Josh Park, and Emmanuel Welkerson for attending the Smith Family Funeral with me in New Jersey a couple weeks ago. That was a hard one to bear, and I appreciate the support of our faith community, and I just want to let everyone know the parents are out of the hospital and are on their way to healing from this tragedy. I was able to end my week with the amazing Go Fourth Festival and 4th of July Parade, thanks to Pottstown Rotary and Go Fourth and the Amys and all the volunteers and sponsors. I mean, it was pretty packed. Did you all go out 4th of July and see all the activities and street fair and the parade? It was pretty awesome. I'd like to also thank Idris Designs for providing me with a custom float, and their car was in the car show the day before, so it was pretty perfect. Coming up, this will be posted on my Facebook page, on the 9th of July, we have the Pottstown Farm from 9:00 to 1:00, also on July 23rd. The Mosaic Garden Tour, I believe there's still tickets available, that's July 9th. July 14th, Pottstown Community Arts Project is underway, I believe at 10:00 AM, to paint the large whale. Is that what, right? Justin's looking at me like I'm, no? Is that happening or no?
I recall the date.
Okay, sorry. I thought maybe. I got that wrong. And then we have Play Streets on the 14th at Barth Elementary, the side field, from 5:30 to 7:30. July 21st, Play Streets at the YW, which is on King Street, from 5:30 to 7:30, and also on July 28th at the Middle School on Franklin Street from 5:30 to 7:30. Red Horse is doing a barbecue for the first responders on July 23rd. And August 27th, save the date, we have our Montgomery County Community College Community Day, where they, it's 9:00 to noon, oh, sorry, 9:00 to 2:00 at the Challenger Center. They're doing their grand opening, and it's going to be at Riverfront Park, and before that, I believe there's going to be a 5K Space Race to kick off the day. And one announcement, the police department is hiring. I would like to repeat that again. The police department is hiring. Testing is on August 20th at the high school at 9:00 AM, and if you would like to test, you need to register on pottstown.org's website by August 5th at 4:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You've been busy. And for our manager?
All right. Thank you and good evening, everyone. So several months ago, I'd been working, began working with Madeleine Dean's office to request a federal budget appropriations request for the extension of Keystone Boulevard. Her office recently informed me that the appropriations subcommittees have released their budget reports, which includes $30 million for the Keystone Boulevard Extension Project. If you recall, we did apply for a RACE grant for the same project a couple months ago. This is a separate funding request from that RACE grant, which is, which is still under review. Terms of the next steps, she had informed me that the budget bills will have to be marked up by the full appropriations committee, then it would move to a House vote, and then the Senate would take up the bill. Once the Senate passes the budget, then the House and the Senate will conference a final agreement, vote on it, and send it to the president for signing. They expect the deadline for the federal budget is October 1st, and there's still quite a few steps to go yet, but the thought was is that this was a really big step in demonstrating to, that the committee supports our recommendation for this project. And typically, the House and Senate rely on the subcommittee's report, and they're indicating that they don't anticipate that these kind of community projects to be too much of a contentious point in the budget. So that's, that's really good news if that's, if that comes through, and we already have another iron in the fire, so to speak, with the RACE grant. So things are progressing on Keystone Boulevard. Next month, we plan to ask council for approval to bid our municipal solid waste disposal services contract. This would be to go out to bid for that contract, not to approve the contract, but just to go out to bid. Staff and our solicitor are currently reviewing the previous specifications for updates. We're currently contemplating a three-year term with two one-year extensions or a five-year term. Other items we're looking at are requirements for daily communications from the bidder's site supervisor to help facilitate more prompt responses for service issues. So if council has any recommendations on what they'd like to see in that, we ask you to send that to us, and we have, again, we have to go out to bid in August for that one. Another update from the PA Senate and House, so the Senate amended House Bill 2157 to further regulate consumer fireworks. That was passed by the House and the Senate and sent to the governor's desk for signature. In the meantime, staff were reviewing how these new laws will help us better enforce and manage legal fireworks used in the borough, and we'll be discussing this at our next ordinance review committee meeting. An outline of the bill includes allowing municipalities to restrict the use of fireworks from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, except during the July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, December 31st, when they can be used until 1:00 AM. The law allows reuse on holidays and over Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends. There's also more severe penalties for improper sales or illegal use, and local governments now have the explicit authority to ban them if they feel there's not a place to use them safely. So that's a pretty big, pretty big update there. I know that's something that we've really been working on for, for a long time, and they finally acknowledged that there needed to be some changes to the most recent laws that were passed on fireworks. Lastly, we have a borough paving update. So H and K started milling and paving on Tuesday, July 5th, at Walnut Street, and from there, they will do Glasgow Street, and then Shoemaker, followed by Wilson. So that's, there's more streets that will be paved, but that's just a schedule that we have for now. And that completes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we're changing the cooperative agreement with paid for the Hesslot.
Yeah, so if you recall, we had a outline of the draft agreement and the RFP for disposition of this property, and we discussed that last month. The agreement and the RFP have now been finalized. We would ask council to provide us any input on that so that the RFP can vote, the council can vote to approve the agreement and the RFP on Monday night at our meeting.
Okay, and we'll list that for action. Tim, is the Moser Road Bridge rehabilitation costs? We had looked at this before.
Yes, we, we had, and inspection reports for this borough-owned bridge over Norfolk Southern have flagged some deterioration that needs to be addressed before it impacts the integrity of the bridge. The primary repair work consists of rebuilding the bridge, abutment bearings, replacement of bridge joints, and decking repairs. We've received a very preliminary cost estimate for this works, which amounts to approximately $800,000, not including engineering services. We're also requesting a grant from Montgomery County Bridge Rehabilitation Program with the hope of covering $500,000 of that cost. So this request is somewhat of a two-part, to move forward with a resolution to apply for the grant for the rehabilitation of the bridge, and in the event that the grant is not awarded, we are requesting to use the borough's American Rescue Plan Act proceeds to cover the cost so that we could potentially start construction as soon as later this year.
Okay, so we'll list that for action Monday.
Okay.
Television, there's going to be an addendum to the agreement, Mr. Garner?
Yes, thank you, Dan, and good evening, everyone. As council knows, since 2012, PCTV has been operated by television. Over the course of that time, there's been several amendments to the initial agreement. The current addendum, which was passed by council two years ago, was ready to expire at the end of July. We're asking council permission to prepare an addendum to extend the current terms and conditions with television for another two years or 24 months. There haven't been significant complaints concerning the operations, and unless council has any thoughts of additional changes to the arrangement, we would simply continue the status quo and extend it for another two years. I don't know if anyone on council was on, back in the 90s and early 2000s, Maplewood Video ran PCTV for a number of years. Video ran PCTV for a number of years. And at that point, it was a whole different animal. We had a cable commission, and it was somewhat profitable to advertise on PCTV. Due to our relationship with Comcast, some of that advertising revenue has not been as fruitful as it was in the past. So, we're happy to have a, an operator that's willing to provide channels to our viewing area. And Justin and I are happy to answer any questions you have. But the motion, if you're inclined to move forward, would be to prepare an addendum, so you could approve it through August.
All the documents are in your, your packet tonight for you to study over the weekend, and we'll list that for approval Monday morning, or Monday night. Thank you, Chuck. Pottstown Area Regional Recreation Committee.
Yeah, so, also known as PARK. They're asking all participating municipalities for a resolution to allow the entity to form a 501(c)(3) organization. In its early implementation, PARK operated its finances under the auspices of Pottstown Regional Planning Committee. Now that PARK has established themselves as a stable and independent entity, they would like to form a 501(c)(3). Some of the things that will allow them to do, for instance, is to receive grant money directly, instead of passing this through PMRPC, and also to collect tax-deductible charitable donations. PARK is currently seeking a grant to cover the costs for creation of this entity, and does not expect to pass these costs on to the participating municipalities.
Okay. No questions, we'll move that for Monday evening. And thirteen, Panera Bread. Chuck, again?
Sure. I think everyone knows that Panera Bread is hopefully coming to 204 Shoemaker Road. The land development plan's been submitted, it's under review by the Planning Commission. Not surprisingly, there is some zoning relief being sought by Panera Bread, primarily related to signage. The signs that are being proposed, you know, Panera Bread has some model signage, and it doesn't always match our ordinances. Our ordinance allows three signs, they're asking for six. Our ordinance also limits directional size signage to six square feet. They're asking for about 13 square feet of directional signs. And also, there's a provision in our ordinance that says you can only have one principal building on the lot. The creation of the Panera Bread building would be a second principal building on the lot at 204 Shoemaker. So, those, those are the zoning relief items they are requesting. I'm not sure a, a date has been scheduled for that zoning hearing yet, but as council knows, you can allow the matter to go to the zoning hearing board. You can take a position, either pro or con, to the zoning relief being requested, and throw it up to council for any discussion or thoughts on whether or not to participate in this appeal.
Okay. Everyone understand? Okay. We'll list that for action Monday evening.
I believe that is in Ward 2, so Counselor Bannity.
Counselor Bannity, any comment?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll act on it Monday evening. Fifteen, the Jewel Ford Jesus Block Party, August 14. Anything on that?
Johnson.
Hit the phone.
Johnson.
Oh, whoa, whoa, I'm sorry, I'll back up. It's a phone. You have that, Chuck?
Yeah, I have that, but I can't, I'm not going to try to pronounce the property owner's names. I apologize.
Okay, so it's 431 Johnson Street.
It's, it's 431 Johnson Street. The property owners are seeking permission to put up a fence. Location of the fence would actually be in the Seventh Street right-of-way, would encroach by about three and a half feet. There are no other issues, the fence is in a fine location, it just happens to be within the right-of-way area. I think there was a request last month, or a prior month, to allow a wall to be placed in the right-of-way. The property owners have signed the appropriate agreement indemnifying the borough with respect to the fence. Again, this fence is not in yet, so they've done it in the right sequence. So, unless there's objection, the staff is recommending that they be allowed to install the fence, subject to the execution of the release and indemnification to the borough.
Okay. I think this is your Ward, Vice President.
I'm good with it.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay. If nothing else, we'll list that for Monday.
Okay.
And now, fifteen, is the Jewel Ford Jesus Block Party.
Yeah, so what I have on this, they're asking to close a portion of Beach North Adams and Grant, immediately surrounding the Ricket Center. And this will be a community block party, plus a giveaway. The date will be the 14th of August, from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Okay. All right, so we'll list that for Monday. Sixteen, is the Belmont Street Block Party.
Yes, so they are requesting to close a portion of Belmont Street between 8th and Reynolds, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. The rein date is 8:27.
Okay. Eight twenty seven. Very good. And we'll move on that Monday evening. Okay, seventeen, is the Board Vacancies, Civil Services, Vince reapplied?
Yes, he has requested to be reappointed.
Okay. And Construction Code Board, it's a three-year term, and one alternate?
Yes, we have John Christman that would like to be reappointed.
Do we need another?
An alternate, if anybody's interested.
Yeah, an alternate if anyone's interested in applying.
So, there's still an opening for that?
Correct.
Right. And we'll do those Monday evening. Harb is asking for approval of 800 High Street, and also 701 to 73, 703's High Street. Descriptions are in your documents. We'll move on that Monday. And Harb Administrative approved our two properties, 240 Chestnut Street and 448 East King Street. And that's done by our administration. I do have one add-on, and I'm going to ask Mr. Garner for a zoning change of 150 Shoemaker Road.
Yes. Yeah, thanks, Dan. We just received this application yesterday, so we're not sure when the hearing will be scheduled, but there's a pretty good chance it'll be scheduled before your next council meeting. This involves the car wash at 150 Shoemaker Road. They're asking permission to install one additional sign to identify their vacuum cleaners, that would be an internally lit sign. They presently have three signs, this would be a fourth sign, and they're seeking zoning relief. Seems to be kind of a minimal request, but, but certainly, you can take a look at it and see if you have any concerns with it, but that's, that's the nature of the quest.
Okay. All right, and we'll deal with it Monday evening. Thank you. It would now be time for comments from our citizens.
And just a reminder to everyone, everyone will have three minutes to speak, and per council's policy, we won't be responding to the comments tonight. Okay, first up, we have Jamie Sanchez. There she is. I can see you back there.
Hi. For the record, I'm Jamie Sanchez, I live at 200 Maplewood Drive in Pottstown. Most of you were at the Go Fourth and the Rotary Parade and Duck Race. We sold 4,090 tickets. That monies will go to about 30 different nonprofits, so the duck race was really, really good. On another note, as many of you know, the fire service is near and dear to my heart. I looked at the last budget, the accounts payable, and as you know, I left the Phillies in 2019. They're still getting the same stipend as when I left. I would like you to really think hard when you do your next year's budget. They are averaging 20, 20,000 a month. 5,000 to 6,000 of that comes off of their insurance, and then they have to pay. So, they do a lot of fundraising to counteract what they don't get from the borough. So, they are also looking for somebody in the paramedic and the EMT, so they are hiring, I did notice. My concern of bringing this up is because when I went to the park the other night, I noticed that there was an EMS truck that is not goodwill. That means they subbed that truck in to cover the park. They have seven, seven EMS trucks. Four of them are working, three of them are not. So, I, I would really implore all of you, I know you cannot break the sunshine law, but I implore all of you to visit these fire departments and see what these guys do. There are 12 paid drivers that have, some of them have more years in the department than you have sitting on council. See what they're all about, see what they need. Because I can tell you, when I left in 2019, we had to scrape to get that money to last. We had the bar at the Phillies, which you can only give certain amount of money from the bar. North End has the banquet hall that they just redid. Goodwill and Empire do not. They do practices and things like that to offset cost. So, I really implore you to look within your budget and figure out what you can do. They make a base rate of $12 an hour. That's not acceptable. We have adequate protection in this borough, that they are at, at your house, no, no questions asked, and they are now covering West Pottsgrove for $12 an hour. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Bruce Madera, please.
I'll just insert this as a new item. You need to work on improving things regarding PCTV, because that outfit lacks big time. I've made many calls to Jenny about various things. Mainly, I want to talk about church and state. And if Sunday's paper wasn't fake news, I was ashamed and disturbed by the article about the churches and what's planned to be done. In this country, church and state are kept separate. For many Christians that I know of, the Bible defines church, and it includes helping the needy. For many, many years, I went to Christ Episcopal, and I knew Father Penny way back, and he's the one who started in that church, 316 High. He started what became the Cluster. And no, I don't can remember anybody in all those years ever calling his work on lawful, anti-zoning, or him cited. Now, somebody to do with Borough Hall evidently has redefined church in some way. And those who are silent on this, permit this, you do violence to the needy. You do not help those. I hear there's 568 needy in Montgomery County, and I think there's quite a few of them in Pottstown or nearby. Some people get all excited about going out to dinner on Saturday night downtown, which is wonderful, you know, although many of us can't afford that. But they don't get excited about the hungry and the needy, and I, I may be one of the last people in Pottstown who does that, because I'm low-income. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Philip Thies, please.
I'd like to comment a little bit, if I may, on what I hear around town about the article that was in the paper regarding citing the two churches. I don't know if all the facts have been brought to fruit, but I think we need to take a hard look at what Mr. Madera said, by the fact that our Lord said in the scripture, "You will always have the poor with you." And he didn't say, "Don't tear care of them." He most certainly implied, "We should." Now, at the same time, our Lord also said, when he was asked by the scribes in Pharisees, "Render under Caesar the things that are Caesar's and those to God, to God's." So, I think there is definitely room here to work out whatever problem there might be. I, for one, want the needy helped. On a side comment, I drive down, I live on South Evans Street, as most people know, and I make a right turn at High and Evans, heading towards either the post office or the hospital. Not the hospital anymore. But I make a right turn, and the filth of the condition of the next two blocks between High and Evans and the library is disgusting. And it's on both sides of the street. It isn't just on the side where they're feeding the poor. Now, there's no filth there in front of Christ Episcopal Church, as far as I've noticed of any large amount. They seem to make sure that things are kept better, and everybody else in that block. Now, I take time, in my senior citizen age now, and I still sweep up out in front of my house, and I pick up the block, not just my place, the whole block. And I think we need a little more consideration for our neighbors in this town, and do so. You know, it's a wonderful thing to bring businesses into town, but we can't go to attract people and to bring businesses if we can't have a clean High Street. And we need to look at all things. But again, let us remember, we have to take care of the poor, and that we also have to render under Caesar what is Caesar's, and to the Lord's what is Lord's. And there might have been some, oh, and there is one other thing. The most shocking thing I hear rumors of in town, and I've lived here my whole life, so I do hear what's going on. Our family's been here for way over 100 years. There's talk of people getting ready for lawsuits. Well, it seems to me, there's another passage in scripture that says, "When you meet your opponent on the way to court, settle with him, lest he turn you, prevail on you in court and turn you over to the torturers." Of course, I use real old translation. So, my concern is, we should settle this problem as quickly as possible, and as peacefully and as charitably as possible for all. Thank you. Oh, and again, we need to clean up High Street on those two blocks. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment.
Counselors, anything to discuss? Russell?
Of course, I'd like to thank the Amys and all the organizers for Go Fourth, for the parade. The boys and I made it to the parade, which we had a family obligation for the fireworks, but we'll be there next year for sure. And I'd like to thank Chief Markovich for organizing our community first board meeting. Wasn't overly intended, but I think the people that came made a difference, and it was good to have it. And thanks to Trinita for, you know, showing up in the end, make sure I was okay.
Counselor Lindsay, Matty, Lee, say anything?
I just, again, want to thank everybody for the, the Go Fourth. It was wonderful. I know the Amys are exhausted, but it was a heck of a party. That's all.
Okay. Vice President Lebedinsky?
I feel the same way about the Fourth, and also the car show, the turnout at the car show was amazing, so Pottstown's looking upwards. And I look forward to seeing more people come in and populate the area.
Very good. Counselor Lindsey?
So, I'm gonna go back a little bit. The police department, what Stephanie said, Madam Mayor, they're hiring. You know that person that will fill that void for the police department, or can do it? Oh, and they don't have any age, Cap, so you can be 80 and join the police department, just saying. I'm 53, I was thinking about it, but I'll talk to y'all later about that one.
I think you still have to pass a physical.
I, I could pass a physical, Madam Mayor.
I don't think.
Don't do that. Don't come for me, Madam Mayor. That's my time. Anyway, so, so I just wanted to let you guys know that. NAACP also had a June NAACP also had a Juneteenth celebration at the Ricket Center, was fabulous. Joe was there, and he was sending me pictures and, and, you know, we was chatting back and forth, because I was in Georgia, my daughter got married, so I was unable to go to Juneteenth. Lisa and I went to Bright Hope's meeting for the playground, and it was packed. So Bright Hope had their meeting, and Ryan had his meeting. There was a bunch of kids there, they, they served pizza, the kids participated in the decision on where the playground was going, it was really nice. Andy, myself, I mean, not Andy, Michael, yes, myself, and Lisa. We went to the playground, Lisa, and not the old playground. The old playground looked like it was back in the 70s. I had flashbacks, like me and Lisa got on the swings, and we started swinging and stuff like that. But it was really, it was a good turnout. And they, then they had the ice cream truck, and the ice cream truck served the kids. It was nice seeing the parents and the kids. And then I came to Ryan's meeting with the police, and there were only, how many constituents did you have at your meeting, Ryan?
First board?
Yep.
A couple other people.
Yeah, a few people came as well, but it was...
Everybody was invited.
Yeah.
But we weren't sure how many people would be there, so we wanted to make it the first board initially.
That's fine.
See if we could fly by.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I know it was a whole lot posted on Facebook, so what I'm getting to is, is that he only had like two or three, his constituents there. When mine, when I have mine, it should be five. You know, I don't want no 10, 20, 30 people here, and just two, three people is good for me, too, also. Just kidding. More to marry. What else I have? Uh, 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 trying to get my stuff together, daughter's wedding, Brian, Lisa. Oh, and once upon a time, I used to work at American Bible Society, so they heard everything that was going on with the explosion, and they gave me, Shawnet Jones, she was, she worked with me there at the American Bible Society, so they gave me bibles for the police department. They're cute, they have the little police and fire on the front of the bible, and also mugs. So I will be going to the fire department, so while I'm there distributing these mugs and bibles on behalf of my American Bible Society and Police Department, I might as well go check out the fire department while I'm doing that. And I think that's it for me, I guess.
Very good. Thank you.
Done.
Joe here?
Yes.
I don't see you, or Mike? Oh, okay. Eric Henry?
Just one thing for council, and you know, a lot of you know, Johnny Corson is hovering in the hospital, and I got you guys a joint card if you would like.
Okay.
We're doing like a card bomb.
Sure.
Hospital, so.
Very good. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. I, I just, okay, I want to make one announcement. As president of council, it is my duty to appoint people to different committees, and I do plan to do some of that Monday evening. Second, maybe it should be first, I really, really want to thank the Go Fourth Committee and the Rotary for the performance on July 4th.
Yes.
I mean, from daybreak to 9:30, it was nonstop on, in this town. If you couldn't find something to do for fun, you have a problem. We don't have a problem, you have a problem. It's probably the best Fourth I've ever attended here. And I want to thank everybody who helped to bring it about, and everybody who attended. We're all welcome to come back next year.
And Justin was there. He was incognito. He had on shorts and a t-shirt, I didn't even know that was him.
Right. Okay, that's, that's all I have. Meeting adjourned.